Please turn your. The agenda today is inspirational and vocational with, uh. Well, today we have our own. Commissioner and absent of the person who was supposed to do it for us today, he's not here. So we're going to ask our own Commissioner Marcia Buford if she would go to the mic and give us our inspiration for today. And at whatever point she start to give us prayer, we ask you to stand and Dean Kicklider, Commissioner Kicklider will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman, we, we, uh, we need to call a meeting to order, need officially call a meeting to order.
Thank you, boy. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
If you would just give us another second that we might go step by. Will the meeting please come to order?
All rise. Oh, yea, oh, yea, oh, yea. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you. You may be seated. I would, uh, first of all, would like to let you know that Commissioner Chairman Chester Ellis will not be here today. He asked me as his vice chair to fulfill the seat for him. That I will do. Thank you very much. Next, we will have the roll call. I'm, I'm sorry again, which.
Inspiration.
Inspiration, please. Let's do that first.
Good morning. Good morning to commissioners, to the commissioners and also to those at Cedar here. This morning, very short, very sweet, uh, our scripture this morning is Galatians six and nine. And let us not be weary in well doing, for in due season you shall reap if you faint not. So this morning, as we continue to do everything that we do, let us not become tired or weary in that. So if you would stand with me in prayer to open this meeting.
Mr. Ellis.
Father God, this morning we just say thank you. Thank you for this day and all that you have planned predestined and purposed for our lives for this day. As we enter into the business of this session, we pray for the leading and guiding of your Holy Spirit to lead us, to guide us, and to give us wisdom and directions for every decision that we're to make for Chatham County on this day. And Father God, today we just bless you and we praise you for doing it. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman. Bobby Lockett, District Three, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two, Chairman Pro Tem.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District One.
Present.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four. Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Aaron Whitley, District Six. Dean Kicklider, District Seven.
Here.
Marcia Buford, District Eight.
Here.
I would like to for you to include Commissioner Whitley's call. And now he could not be here today because of this question situation.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Whitley.
Second. So does Chairman Ellis.
I amend my second to include the chairman if you omit your motion.
Thank you.
I amend the motion.
It's been moved a second that we excuse those commissioners and chairpersons who could not be here today. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's vote on them individually. Uh, Commissioner Whitley.
We didn't have to, Dave.
I didn't think so.
Hand it to Bezos.
I would do it blankly then. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. We would do it, uh, blankly and I'll include all in favor. Been voted that we excuse those who are not here for whatever reason. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda call for. Special proclamation for bond rating by Courtney Rogers.
Yeah. Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, uh, Courtney is here to, uh, give the board a brief update on our increase in bond rating, uh, the triple A. Something we're very proud of. Uh, while Courtney comes to the podium, I'd also like to recognize, uh, Mr. Tripp Thompson, who is here present today. Tripp and his team were very instrumental in helping us, uh, tell our story to Moody's. And I, I really want to personally thank him for his efforts in this endeavor. So Tripp and, and we had, uh, a lot of, uh, input from the chamber and the, uh, visitors and convention bureau and just a number of folks, uh, in the community. So it's something, uh, that county, uh, commission ought to be proud of, and it shows just how strong this community is. So Courtney.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, great to see you all again. My name is Courtney Rogers. I am with Davenport Company. We're the financial advisor for the county and, uh, happy to be here this morning and congratulate you on your triple A, which is a huge achievement that we're going to talk about here this morning. And I'm sorry Chairman Ellis is, uh, not able to be with us this morning because he was instrumental as well. He was with us the entire day we did the tour. And so, uh, just wanted to mention that. A little background, we, uh, the last time the county was formally raided was actually in the summer of 2020, as you all, we all remember that was during COVID. And that was when we issued the sixty seven million and change for the judicial complex. Um, we had planned, uh, at that time to bring the ratings down. We had planned on having them in May of 2020. We had been talking about it this early in January and February before COVID really took its toll on us. And, um, because we had been working for the county at that point, three or four years, and I had asked when we first got, uh, hired, when was the last time that the ratings actually came down for a tour? And my recollection is that no one could remember that they had ever been here. And so I said, well, we need to get them down here. We need them to see what's going on because, um, for you to understand the way the ratings look at things, they're very, um, they've gotten more and more, um, technical. They're looking at a lot of metrics and things like that. But we believe it's important for them to see, get on the ground and see really what's going on, not just look at the numbers that they may get by sitting in their offices in either Dallas or Chicago or up in New York, but get on the ground and see it. And so we're, we're big believers on getting them down here. So, um, you know, we've been talking with staff and as, as the county has now continued to be strong since that time, you have the port continuing to grow. You've got, um, post-COVID tourism came back really strong. And of course, we didn't know this in 2020, but Hyundai's Met, um, Meta plant. And so with all those things going, we thought it was a great time to bring them down for a visit. Now, you have two ratings, S and P Global is the other one. Unfortunately, they could not, uh, or, or their policies is that they don't travel unless there's actually a bond rating to be done. And so we'll try to get them next time. So on May twentieth, we had them come down and, uh, a month later on the twenty third, they released the report. And so as you'll see on the chart here, you are at the highest rating at triple A. And so, um, we're, we're going to keep pushing and try to get S and P that next time we do have bonds. Why is that important? Well, there's a couple of things. One, it's going to determine when we do go to the bond market, it's going to determine, uh, the interest rates on the bonds. It'll get us the, the best rate possible. But, um, and it's, I'm glad that Tripp's here this morning because it also, when he's doing his job and, and talking to industries around the country about possibly locating here, it tells them that, hey, this place is really run well from a governing standpoint, has great management, and it talks about the financial health of not only you, but the community itself. And so it's very important. He act, and funny thing is, um, he actually mentioned that before. I said, you've seen my presentation, haven't you? And so it's good to hear from the actual person who's doing that work that he agrees with what we've always thought, uh, in our world. So what was our day like? Um, we started out at Tripp's office there at Cedar. He gave a great overview of the area, showed him a video, answered questions about the economy, as you can imagine. One of the questions they wanted to know about was tariffs and the, and the impact possibly on the ports. So he did a great job covering that. Um, we then sat down, um, and went through a credit presentation that we put together, working with your staff. And, and this presentation goes through a lot of different details such as demographics, talking about assessed value growth, talking about local economy and how that's been growing, talking about the, your finances and how you've trended over the last several years, but also, uh, talking about your fund balance levels. What we'll talk about here in just a moment. We then went and did a tour of the new convention center. While we were there, we had lunch up in the new executive dining room. And then we had, uh, a great, uh, overview during our lunch about tourism and what, and how that's been going. We then left, went and did a tour of the port. We did a drive by of the Meta plant and the industrial park. And then we finished up, um, at the Gulf Stream and got to go through the, um, got to go, uh, through and see the showroom. No one left with an order, uh, just so you know, nobody put an order in on any planes as we were leaving, but it was neat to hear about how they're doing, especially since they are your largest employer in the area. So at the end of the day, um, we didn't drop them off at the airport because they flew home, but I, what I'll say is that we all felt that it was a really great day. We had, um, we didn't have a lot of questions following up. We prepared, we gave them a few reports and things that they ask about, uh, as follow up, but we didn't have a lot of questions. So we felt pretty good. And when we got the call, we were very, very pleased. The report basically, um, outlined credit strength, credit challenges, and talked about things that could lead to downgrade. And what I like to do is summarize those real quick. Um, in terms of your strengths, they, they talked about the long track record of maintaining and balanced budgets and a very healthy reserves. They talked about your low, long-term liabilities. And what do they mean are, you don't have any debts that are really ten to twenty years. Most of the debt you've issued in the past, one that we did last time was very short, paid for with spots, um, tax revenues. And then they talked about the strong full value per capita. Essentially, they're looking at not just your assessed value because you assess it, of course, at forty percent full value. They're comparing you to other states, other localities in other states. So they do full value. And so they take your per capita divided by the full value of the area. And you'll see in a moment, I'm going to show you a chart comparing you to others. You do very well. They also talked about the rapidly growing economic base, very important to them. Challenges, they talked about while it is growing, there, there are concerns about manufacturing port activity. And I think my read of that is it's really about the tariffs. They, they, that was, you know, they just want to put that in there as a concern. They talked about, and that is one of the challenges we had, and we knew that going in, is that resident incomes are lower than most of the highly rated peers that you'll see in a moment. And then exposure to fiscal climate risk. Obviously, you're right here near the coast and hurricanes are an issue. And I think that's one of the reasons why they talk about in a moment, the, the fund balance, uh, levels you'll, you'll see here on the factors that could lead to a downgrade. They mentioned about prolonged economic slowdown could adversely affect your income levels and wealth levels, and also weaken your revenue raising ability. And then finally, trend of budget deficits and/or a sustained decline in your reserves below thirty five percent. Your policy right now is twenty five percent. One of the things we've talked about with staff since the report came out is we might come back to you later with a, uh, a recommendation to, to increase your policy to thirty five percent to sort of match this, just to keep ourselves, uh, in good standing with them. So here's the, I think the thing that the, the public should know, and I want you all to understand is this is very, very, very big for you. There are only seven other counties in the state. Hundred and fifty nine counties, you're now one of eight that are triple A by Moody's. You'll see the chart here. Um, double A three is sort of the, the high mark for, uh, the state in terms of the counties. There's only fifty eight that are actually rated. And so you're one of those fifty eight. Only eight, thirteen percent are actually triple A. The others are Cobb, Columbia, Fayette, Forsyth, Gwinnett, Oconee, and Paulding. The other thing to note when you kind of look at those names is you're only one of three that aren't in the metro Atlanta area. And I think that's, uh, that, that speaks to, uh, to great things that you've done down here. So the next few slides give you a little bit of a sense of how you stack up versus those other triple As. Also the Georgia median of those triple As as well as the national median. You'll see the first one, I mentioned earlier, that full value per capita, you do very well. You can see you're actually at the top of that chart, just above the medians both nationally and, uh, in, in the state. Economic growth, this is a measure, they basically look at like the last three years and say, okay, what is the growth been of the last three years locally versus the United States GDP? And so you can see here that you are way above the rest of the state and the rest of the triple As. So that's, uh, that's a great sign. One of the things that I'll note is you see the negative on the red there for Columbia and Oconee being negative. That's because they're more residential. And I think that's one of the big differences you see here is that, that speaks to that, uh, economic side that you can balance with the residents you have. Available fund balance, you can see you've done very well here. You're right at the medians. Um, you're above that thirty five percent that they speak about, but you'll, you'll, you, now you understand why that might be a good idea. Why you're strong is to go ahead and raise that policy. And then long-term liabilities, basically the amount of debt, you can see you're the lowest of all the triple As. And another kind of measure of debt is the fixed cost ratio. And you can see you also do very well there. So lastly, nationally, um, you'll see again, out of three thousand counties in the United States, there's only seven hundred and twenty four that are actually rated by Moody's. And only a hundred and nineteen of those are roughly sixteen percent are rated triple A. So again, you can see on the chart, it's the, it's, uh, you, you do very well. Uh, again, you're up there with the best of the best. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, happy to answer any questions, but again, really, we So, Mr. Vice Chairman, happy to answer any questions, but again, really, we just wanted to congratulate you and make sure that your constituents knew what a great job you all have done financially and running the management, if you will, of the county over the last several years. So again, congratulations from us.
Thank you very much. Let's give my hand.
Absolutely.
Also, do we have any commissioners who would like to make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. I just want, I'm excited about all of this, and I, as you stated, the importance of it, there's not, we didn't get a whole lot of press. We can create the press. I mean, we can, we can make the bells and whistles go off if we need to, and I think that that's possibly something that we can do with our website and interviews on the chat, on television network channels. We can, I mean, there's a press release going out, of course, the Savannah Tribune is always willing to publish. I always got to get that in there. But yeah, I think this is very important, so let's, let's just make the fireworks happen.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you so much, Trip, for all that you do to get this done.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd really like to give Trip a couple of minutes at the microphone to emphasize just how important this is for when they are going out to solicit prospects for this area. So, Trip?
Good morning. Thank you for having me up here. This is a huge achievement for the county. When we go out and court businesses and companies to the region, one of the first things they ask about is how fiscally sound is the community that we're, that they're going into. And we've always started with the state. The state has had a long reputation of a AAA bond rating. I think Georgia's one of eight states, maybe seven, in the country that have that. To be able to tag on to that and say that Chatham County also has a AAA bond rating really shows these, these companies and the executives that we have our act together here financially. I think it's one of the biggest achievements that Chatham County as a government's had since I've been here. I've been here for 25 years, and I think y'all should celebrate. I asked why there wasn't any cake out here today, but maybe that comes later. But this is a big dag gum deal, and y'all should be very, very proud. I'd like to thank Michael and of course Linda and all the folks that take care of the money and do all this. It's a, it's a huge, it's a huge deal and something that y'all should be very proud of. So thank you.
Thank you. And Trip, certainly we want to thank you for all the things that you do in Chatham County, but we also want the public to know what a great job this county and our finance department is doing as far as being good stewards of the finance. Any other message? If not, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We enjoy working with you. Next, we're going to ask Commissioner Milton if she would acknowledge our constitutional officers as well as special guests who might be here today.
I'm happy to do that, Mr. Vice Chair. We have a host of awesome people that serve our county here today, including the captain of the sheriff's department. Wave your hand. And we have, Dr. Bonzo Reddick is in the house. It's always good to have a doctor in the house. He is the executive director of our Chatham County, oh, Coastal Georgia Health Department.
Coastal Georgia.
And we also have our president of the school board, Roger Moss. And then next to him is Jared Downs, who co-chairs with Trip on how wonderful Chatham County is. Oh, and I can't leave, I did see him earlier. Oh, well, I was looking for my, my, I don't see him. Okay. Can't leave my, my chief out, the chief of the police department, Chatham County Police Department, and chief of the fire department that we got going on. So I'm just happy to acknowledge all of you and glad that you are all a part of Chatham County and keeping everything working. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
We also have Colin McRae. He's here also.
Thank you for being here. I'm sorry, I, I saw you there, but I...
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Next, we will have the Employees' Service Award presented by Personnel.
Yes. Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to ask our HR team to come forward as we recognize employees for their various years of service.
So we will continue our celebrations this morning as we celebrate our greatest asset, which is our people. This morning, we will award 12 individuals who collectively have 220 years of service to Chatham County. We begin with Ms. Stephanie Smalls with Superior Court Administration with 35 years of service. Lieutenant Patricia Gardner with the Detention Center, also 35 years of service. Also with the Detention Center, Sergeant Tanya Roberts Johnson with 30 years of service. With our District Attorney's Office, Ms. Shawna Anderson with 30 years of service. Ann Kephart with Magistrate Court with 20 years of service. Colin McRae with Voter Registration with 20 years of service. Jill McCall with the Detention Center with 15 years of service. Montrell Jenkins with ICS with 15 years of service. Billy Lappin with ICS with 15 years of service. Devin Wallace with ICS with 10 years of service. Judge Thomas Cole with Juvenile Court with 10 years of service. Latrelle Golata with Juvenile Court with 10 years of service. Mr. Jim Fisher with Parks and Recreation with five years of service. Chatham County thanks you for your service and dedication.
Congratulations on behalf of the county commissioners. That's quite a bit of seniority, and we certainly appreciate you for your works. Good place to work. We have on the agenda, no commissioner item, but we do have, I do need a motion for someone to make so we can add to the, the commissioner items.
I'd like to make a motion to add the Lamarville, Lamar...
Individual action number three.
Actually, we're moving item number three to the commissioners.
Yeah. To simplify it, item number three to commissioners' items.
Second. Are there a question on the motion?
No need to vote.
If not, I'll vote on the favor of the aye and the opponent's aye.
Now, that was, okay, that was, that was a vote to move to the commissioner. But what we have here is a, oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to ask Commissioner Milton, who's the commissioner for the fifth district, if she would make this presentation because of it being in her district, and she has worked very hard to get this done. Commissioner Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask that the family of Ms. Bertha Mae Cummings, who are in the audience, would you please come forward? I have a resolution here that we're going to, that I'm going to read, and of course, we all have to vote on it, but I'm going to come up here and let you state your claim. But before that, let me read the resolution. The resolution is to rename Lamarville Park to Bertha Mae Cummings Park. Whereas Bertha Mae Cummings, affectionately known as Ms. Burke, was one of the first residents of the Lamarville community. And whereas Bertha Mae Cummings, as a neighbor and parent of the Lamarville community, served as an unofficial park manager and supervised many of the children in the community to ensure a safe and enjoyable experience for all. And whereas Bertha Mae Cummings was able to secure playground equipment and basketball and football sports equipment from Chatham County Parks and Recreation Department for use in the park. And whereas Bertha Mae Cummings organized many community activities for the children of Lamarville to include summer lunch programs and block parties to give back to school supplies. And Bertha Mae, and whereas Bertha Mae Cummings initiated the Lamarville Neighborhood Watch, where she led the efforts to organize street captains and conducted monthly meetings with neighbors and law enforcement. And whereas Bertha Mae Cummings was a dedicated advocate for the park and the community. And it was through her tireless efforts that today, park has become, the park has become family-friendly gathering spot for community enjoyment. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Chatham County Board of Commissioners in regular meeting assembled that the Lamarville Park be renamed Bertha Mae Cummings Park in recognition of her continued dedication and service to the park and Lamarville community. So in witness thereof, of course, this is, this is all signed. We have a resolution. It is signed by our Chairman Chester Ellis, but it is to recognize I have here, here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to fix this day, which is the 18th of July, 2025. We're going to name the park for Bertha Mae Cummings. So I ask her, do we need to take the vote now?
We will take the vote.
We'll take the vote now. So I'll make the motion. I've already read the resolution, so we'll take it.
Second.
You heard the resolution being read, and you heard a nice vote. Motion, a motion has been made, and we have a second. It's all in favor of the aye and hit the buzzer.
Hit the buzzer. So yay. So we have family members here and neighbors from the community, just if you would have a few words to say.
Yes, starting out, my name is Kenneth Dandy. We have here my sister, Janice Dandy Harris, and Ms. Cummings' son, Jeffrey Cummings. We served on a, on a, on a project team to bring this to Commissioner Milton, and we thank you, Commissioner Milton and the commission, for all you've done to make this a reality. We've been, we've been wanting to do this for the longest time, and actually, it is a surprise to, so, so Ms. Cummings doesn't know this yet.
Oh, wow.
So we try to, you know, I know, we just know she's going to be so excited. You heard about the things she's done, and this came from us. You know, it wasn't made up or anything like that. This is what we actually saw. One, just one story, if I can share, you know, the basketball court, let me just start there. Me and all the other guys in the neighborhood wanted to be Dr. J so bad, and, you know, we didn't have a basketball hoop or anything in the park. We would just take a bicycle tire, a rim, and nail it to one of the telephone poles, and that was our hoop for a while. And, you know, thank God, Ms. Burke, you know, got swung into action and really, at least got us a goal. Now we have a full court there, but just, just, just shows that, you know, how important her, her work was to Lamarville. And I'll, I'll yield and let Jan and Jeffrey say the things they want to say. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, good morning. Thank y'all for having us and hearing us, and thank you for all the work and everything that you did to support this and make it happen. And just, you know, I'm the youngest. I'm, I'm the youngest of four children of Ms. Cummings, and when I was born, we moved in the neighborhood. My mom's always told me that when I was born, I encouraged change. So that's just the type of person she is, that's always encouraging. And, and so, you know, I grew up seeing things that I thought was normal with her just interaction in the community and just making certain things happen in our neighborhood. And I've, when I've become grown and became older, I realized that it was unique, and we were blessed. And so a lot of the kids that was grazed in my generation and my kids' generation just simply appreciate and grow to just respect. And I, we was approached by friends and neighbors with this, and myself and my siblings was really honored and really blessed by Jan and Kenny. And Mr. Kenny just took charge and just led us, and we thank y'all for just all your support and just all, how you have just truly just blessed us.
So that, that speaks a lot, that speaks volumes to Ms. Cummings. I'm very excited for this day. We have the, do we have the resolution?
No.
We'll make the resolution. Is it?
We're here.
Mr. Manager?
We'll get that to the...
We'll get that to you.
And we'll also get with our Parks and Rec to get the signage redone, and we'll have a date that we can do dedication.
Correct.
We'll get with Parks and Rec to erect the sign and make the transition, and we'll have a big part... have a big party, big celebration. Right now, I'm coming down to get a picture with you, and what I have is the resolution.
While Commissioner Milton is on her way, she is affectionately called the Park Lady.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And they said with great respect.
All right. And if I may, just lastly, I want to thank Mr. Kegler, as well as Ms. Kramer and Mr. Propper. Propper, right, Proper, Steve Proper, right. Yeah, there he is, yeah, thanks. They've, they've been, they've been very helpful in this process as well, and we certainly want to thank them for that.
Jan, you should have just made comments.
Next on the item is table items, there are no table items. We will move on to individual action items. And we're to vote, we're to vote on the commissioners' recommendations for board appointments. We'll bring that before you at this point. Appointment to the, appointment to the Chatham Savannah Authority for the Homeless, the Honorable Chris Milton.
Milton.
Milton. Appointment, appointing of Dr. Renee Douse to the Chatham Savannah Authority for the Homeless. Reappoint DePica Paul to the Coastal Development Authority. Reappointment James Drake to the Coastal District Development Authority. Reappointment Linda Kramer to the Chatham County Hospital Authority. Reappoint Brenda Gaines to the Chatham County Hospital Authority. Reappoint Albert J. Scott to the Chatham Hospital Authority. Reappoint Ambra Burksdanner to the Library Board. Reappoint Gabrielle Gardner to the Library Board. Reappoint Tracy Amrick to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Reappoint Jeff Nautic.
Nutrica.
Nautic.
Nutrica.
Nutrica, okay, thank you for that. Nutrica to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. To reappoint Tom.
Why would he?
Why would he? Why would he? I wanted to repeat it. To Metropolitan Planning Commission. Appoint Jason Armstead to the Chatham County Tree Commission. Appoint Laurel McKinnon to the Chatham County Tree Commission. Appoint Joe Zo, Rinker, to the Chatham County Tree Commission.
Motion to approve board appointments as listed.
Second.
It is a motion moved and second that we make these appointments. Thank you. Next, we're going to have, next presentation, I'm going to have Commissioner. Our vice, our.
Protam.
Should have a protam. To present this to us, Mrs.
I'll read the following individual action items. To request board approval of the following budget amendments and transfers FY 2025 in the CIP Fund, decrease transfer in from general fund in the vehicle replacement project for 2.2 million. In the general fund, increase transfer in from CIP in detention center salaries, 2.2 million FY 2026. In the general fund, increase miscellaneous revenue in museum professional services, $15,000. In the multiple grant fund, increase revenues and expenditures for $193,070 for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Juvenile Court Family Treatment Court Grant. Increase revenues and expenditures for $94,451 for the CJCC Juvenile Mental Health Court Grant. Increase revenues and expenditures for $276,238 for the CJCC Savannah-Chatham County Drug Court Grant. Increase revenues and expenditures, $106,249 for the CJCC Mental Health Court Grant. Increase revenues and expenditures for $73,769 for the CJCC DUI Court Grant. Increase revenues and expenditures, $194,750 for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Savannah-Chatham County Drug Court Grant. In the Capital Improvement Program Fund, transfer $5.4 million from contingency to the SEMA Building Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It is motion approved, aye.
Chair. If I may.
Who else?
We got it first and second.
We got it first and second, but we will take.
Okay, may I say something?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Just for the record, I want the sheriff, the sheriff and the sheriff's department to know that there's, money's being shifted around in here, but this is in no way, shape or form trying to take away the monies for your replacement of your vehicles, and that this money will be back with you for the purchase of vehicles coming up in the very near future, so.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Noting that. You've heard that from Commissioner Kegler, now we will take the, the motion that has already been made, so all in favor of the aye?
Aye.
Go to the board. Thank you.
We addressed item number three under commissioner items, so moving to item number four, adoption of the tax year 2025 millage levy resolution for the Board of Public Education for the City of Savannah and the County of Chatham pursuant to advertisement having been published in accordance with OCGA 48-5-32.1. In addition, Form PT 35 County Millage Rate Certification and Form PT-32.1. Computation of millage rollback and percentage increase in property taxes for the year 2025. Forms must be certified and submitted to the Georgia Department of Revenue for digest approval for the tax year 2025.
Motion to approve.
It has been moved, are we approved, can we get a second?
Second.
Discussion.
There's an additional motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Basically, in a nutshell, again, I've been consistent throughout the years, I will vote against this because it's a horrible state law that Georgia forces on the county commissions throughout the state. They basically pass over a budget from the Board of Education's to each county, and the county is forced to approve it. And we are forced to do so without knowing anything about the budget, so I'll just let that be known, that because we don't, I will vote no again, so nothing to do with our Board of Education, so, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
If not, we have a motion, a second on the floor, could we vote? Motion passed.
Request board approval of intergovernmental agreements between the county, the city of Savannah, and other county municipalities that support the call for an election to impose a 1% sales and use tax, also known as SPOS, effective October 1st, 2026. Identify capital outlay projects and establish a revenue distribution process, and direct that all such IDAs are to be executed by the chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
You heard the, can we get a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved, can we get a second on the motion?
Second.
If there are questions? Question or comment on the motion?
Yes, I just want the public to know, in case the media tries to misconstrue this, this we're approving here today is the approval to request the extension of the 1% sales tax that's currently in place. If we are not approving the request of an additional penny to what we already paid, this would merely extend the great things that helped us achieve this credit rating we heard about earlier, and many other major projects that couldn't have been done without it, so it's the extension, not a request for a new one. Thank you.
Any other comment? Thank you, the motion, all in favor of the aye? I'm sorry, that you get.
And Mr. Chairman, we didn't approve anything except the right to give the voters the chance to vote to extend it, make that clear.
You made it very clear in your comment, very clear, and the public needs to know that.
Request board approval of a resolution directing the chairman to notify the elections superintendent of the Chatham County Board of Elections to issue the call for an election for the purpose of submitting the question to impose a county 1% sales and use tax, SPOS, to the voters of Chatham County on November the 4th, 2025, and to take such steps as may be required by law for such election. The county and municipalities have determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Chatham County to continue funding capital outlay projects through SPOS, and ask that SPOS be continued and reimposed for a six-year period beginning on October 1st, 2026. The SPOS would be imposed for the purpose of funding various capital outlay projects of the county and municipalities as designated in Exhibit A and B.
Motion to approve.
Second. It is a motion approved, and second, who could go to the board, please?
Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioner, you have officially called for a November SPOS vote.
It is on the ballot.
Chatham County Police Department Quarterly Report will now be given by our Chief Headley.
Brief report. Brief report, yes, sir, yes, sir, all instructions. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. I did not get any phone calls from Philadelphia, so that was a good thing. That's right, Commissioner Milton, I don't have any connections in Paris, but glad you had a good time. Well, again, good morning, everybody, good to see everyone's face, I'll be real, real quick. Here's our 2025 year-to-date Part 1 crime data. We are, I don't know why that doesn't show that, but total robberies are down nine so far in 2025. Our non-domestic gun assaults have decreased substantially. Our total violent crimes are below last year at this point of 28%, which I think is very notable. Auto thefts and thefts are both down in 2025. We did have a few arsons this year, and total property crimes are down 18%, so our total crime so far this year is down 20% relative to our same timeframe as last year, so a lot of hard work from the detectives and CCPD, I really appreciate what they do every day out there. This just is reflective of the beach across the county and within your particular districts. Beat 9, 147 so far this year, Part 1 crimes, 157 in Beat 7, 222 in Beat 8, 8 in Beat 6, obviously our lowest, mostly industrial area up that way, Beat 1, 41, Beat 2, 44, Beat 3, 36, 62 in Beat 4, and 45 in Beat 5. This is a feature, so this is one on Wednesday, what we've been doing along with our PIO is our detectives highlight a case that they've done where they've secured warrants, and we put one on Wednesday on our website as a way to get the word out that we're looking for folks that has generated some really good information, some good feedback from the community. This was an initiative by our CID Division, and just wanted to highlight that today. Moving on, here's neighborhood outreach, so Dee Antoinette Rodriguez Harrison, which is a mouthful, there'll be a spelling test later on her name, but she's our neighborhood liaison officer, just a fantastic young lady, really excited for her and what she's been doing out there in the community. She's done numerous community meetings in Bluffside, Burnside Island, Landings, Burrows, Village Green, all in the last 60 days. She's attended summer camps, she's gone to private birthday parties. Oftentimes, we'll get a request from a citizen because one, a very young child is enamored with the police, and so we show up with some, you know, some, some swag and, and some goodwill and surprise them on their birthday, and that's something we're always willing to do to kind of show that we're human, that we care about the community and, and give kids someone to look up to. So, again, really thankful for, I call her Dee, and all of her hard work, and she'll continue to expand that program as, as we go forward. This is a location of citizen contacts, I brought this map numerous times throughout my presentations throughout the years, and again, this is, so what those dots represent is officers getting out of their car and connecting with citizens, and they're non-call-driven, meaning they're not called there, they're not there to respond to a burglary or a criminal incident, this is them taking the initiative to connect with their community. In the last 14 weeks, we've had 1,771 citizen contacts, so that's 1,700 conversations, that's 1,700 hellos and goodbyes and thank yous and whatnot, and that's just, I think, an excellent way, not only for the community to see the officers in a very human way, but conversely, the officers see the community in such a way as well, and this is an exchange of goodwill, so maximizing positive human contact in any of the things that we do, whether it be law enforcement or government, government in general, always bodes well for, for the community, so really, again, thanks to the, to the officers doing that work out there every day. We do have 12 new recruits in the current police academy. Professional Standards worked incredibly hard to get that high of number in the academy. We're still obviously hiring, they work very diligently getting folks in the door, as, as retention and recruiting is certainly a challenge for all law enforcement across the country. But not only do I want to thank Professional Standards for the, the hard work that they do, but I also want to thank the board, and I mean that sincerely. You guys have been nothing but supportive of the police department since we got back up and running in 2018. You're very supportive publicly, you say from the dais, you're very supportive, and our officers see that, and that reflects in their opinion of the county and certainly the opinion of the police department, so many thanks to you for what you do for us every single day. And lastly, Corporal Givante Spieby and his canine, Neo, he was awarded the Top Apprehension Award in the Canine Law and Order Training and Competition held in Maryland, so very, very proud of Givante, he's really taken to that position, and we're very happy for him. And again, it was judged against 70 other teams from around the country, and he won the award for Chatham County, so very thankful for that, thankful to Givante, to all his time, energy, and effort on that. And a couple things before I open up for questions, Commissioner Noah, we did get those signs erected in Houshun Bluff. Okay, good, so we took care of that, and then we've also done a lot of extension, extensive work at 20495, I know Commissioner Whiteley is not here, I know we have a meeting coming up, July 29th, we'll be prepared for that. Mr. Kegler, we've got a, a presentation that we will present there, instead of just having the conversation, I know it's always a concern out there, and your concern that you brought to us, I won't get into any details, but we're looking into that as well, so a lot of hard work has gone on out there, and it's still a challenge, we know that, but we are very intentional in our work out there. Aside from that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Next question.
I have a couple of questions, and the first one, you may need some assistance from Chief Vickers, but the arsons that were listed, are those suspected arsons, are those confirmed and prosecuted, or what, is that, how do we determine, when we list an arson, what does that mean?
Well, what it means for, for our end, and I'll let.
Right.
Chief can come up if you, if you'd like to as well, if I say something that doesn't, isn't congruent with what his position is, it's, it's through, in conjunction with the Fire Department, determining, you know, based on, you know, our observations at the moment, that's either, you know, an arson or potential arson, classified as such, and then we'll work with the state fire marshal to.
So this includes potential arsons as well?
So, this includes potential arsons as well?
Correct.
Gotcha. And my other, I have two more.
Now, later on, it make, determine it wasn't.
Correct.
But there may be some evidence that.
But this number includes potential.
Correct.
Because it was a high number and, you know, if half of them come back as they weren't arsoned or.
Then we would go back and change that.
Right.
Yes.
Got it. And then the wanted Wednesday, that's a great idea. Remember America's Most Wanted and you see the picture on TV. Is there any way we could get those, contact some of the local TV stations and maybe get those on there for a little plug every now and then? It might help some exposure. I know a lot of people don't have computers or don't use them for that manner. And then recruit retention, what kind of retention rate do we have after recruitment, say, a year out? What does that look like? And also, how long after graduation are those recruits riding solo?
So, the first answer to your question as far as a retention rate, just be mindful that in the state of Georgia, there is a legal requirement for when we hire a new officer, that they have to stay with the agency for two years. If they, if they don't, if they leave and go to another agency and they hire them, then that agency and/or that individual has to reimburse the county for training expenses. So, that's part of Georgia code. So, we, I can't remember the last time we had anybody, other than they weren't successful in field training, that didn't stay beyond or, or left before that two-year, that two-year mark. What was the second question, Commissioner?
How long before they're riding solo after graduation?
After graduation, it's about 12 to 16 weeks. Just depends on their progress in the field training process. We certainly don't want to release somebody on their own.
That's good.
Yeah, so about 12 to 16 weeks.
Chief, can you talk, can you mention the extended training time that's now in state law?
Yes, sir. So, Georgia Public Safety Training Council added additional hours to the Police Academy curriculum. Previously, it was around 11 weeks for a recruit to start the academy and then graduate from the academy. They bumped that up to 20 weeks. So, then they're only holding, at least currently, two academies a year where previously they would, they would handle four. So, that limits our ability to get folks in the academy or, there's only two a year as opposed to four a year. Now, I think there's going to be a reevaluation of that, that 20 weeks at the end of the year and they may bump that back a little bit to maybe 16 weeks, but that's purely a guess on my part. Thank you, Commissioner.
You have a question to the Chief. Thank you.
I just, I just want to congratulate you on the work that you've done, that everything is down. All the crime is down. That's awesome.
Well, we appreciate that. And it takes the community, too. We get a lot of feedback from the community. They give us calls. They feel confident, I think, in calling us that we're going to at least address an issue. We may not be 100% successful, but the intention is there. We're going to get back with them, we're going to give them feedback and try to work with them in solving their neighborhood problems.
And I'll be reaching out to you to get Dee to come and do some of my neighborhood meetings.
Okay, absolutely. She'd love to. Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
First reader, as far as the first reader, we're going to ask. Commissioner Milton of the.
The Action Calendar.
You are correct. We're going to.
I'll make a motion, with your permission, sir, on the Action Calendar. We are going to pull item 14G. Do we need a separate vote to pull it or?
No, you can just approve the Action Calendar in its entirety except for.
At this point, I'll make a motion to approve the Action Calendar in its entirety except for item 14G.
Second.
It is moved and second that we move Action 14.
G.
G off the calendar and proceed with the rest of it. All in favor is aye? I'm so used to these community meetings that I go to where we don't have this technology.
Okay, now at this time, we can address 14G.
Now, we can address 14G.
Well, ask our county engineer, Ms. Cooler, to come to the podium and give us an update on that 14G.
Good morning. So, 14G is to award a contract to Thomas and Hunter Engineering to update the Drainage Basin Study for Harden Canal Basin. Harden Canal is a nearly 12-mile-long canal that starts in Bloomingdale and ends around Salt Creek. It goes through Bloomingdale, Pooler, Savannah, unincorporated, many jurisdictions. The Drainage Basin Ford is over 14,000 acres. This, what this will do is update a previously done study. It'll incorporate growth in that area, climate change, sea level rise, changes in groundwater tables, all the things that'll give us a full study that we can keep updated as growth happens, but also identify projects that need to be done to improve drainage in the basin. And we'll point out that the cost on it being $500,000 seems extensive. We will get reimbursed $300,000 from the federal government through a brick grant that we received, thanks to staff's effort and the help of Jackie Jackson and the Resiliency Office. So, and it's much needed so that we can identify projects that need to be done to improve drainage in that basin.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, ma'am. I just want to thank you and thank Jackie and thank the staff. And I wanted to pull this so that people at home watching could know, we, we basically have two major canals running through West Chatham County that pretty much drains most of West Chatham County. And we, throughout the years, we've put millions into these two canals there, but we're at a point now which anyone living anywhere near this particular canal can tell you that there, we have to have the improvements made. And just going in and widening it or whatever is not going to solve the problem. So, I commend the staff for getting that extra $300,000. So, I just want the public to know this is half a million dollars right now going into it now, in addition to the millions that we've, we've already spent. But we need this to study it, to actually hopefully be able to address the problem in a better manner in the future here. So, excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, with your permission, I'll make a motion to approve.
It has been moved.
Second.
And second that we approve the agenda.
Item 14G.
14G. All in favor is aye? I guess, excuse me, I'm just very accustomed to neighborhood. The board, please. Now, the first reader, we're going to ask Commissioner of the Fifth District Milton to present that.
So, the first reading is Amendment to Chapter 24, Article 1, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance to Establish Consistency and Format with the County Ordinance and Provide Clarity to the Residents and Developers on Development Requirements in the Various Special Flood Hazard Areas Located in Unincorporated Chatham County in the Chatham County Codebook.
We're just reading into the record for this meeting.
We're reading.
Yeah, we're reading to the record. And do I, do I go on?
Yeah, reroute, read it.
Okay. The second one is to request board approval of the 2025 Revenue Ordinance. And the third one is the Amendment to Section 110, Enforcement of Chatham County Environmental Health Regulations Ordinance found under Chapter 21, Health, Safety, and Sanitation of the Chatham County Code.
Mr. Vice Chair, at the next meeting, we'll have additional information for you and also solicit any public comment if there be any.
And then we'll vote on it.
Yes.
After that. Thank you. There is no other reading, second reading. There's no second readings today. Next, we will go, is there anything the Commissioner would like to? If not, then we, our agenda has been completed. We will ask the County Manager to, if he have any information for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. At your table there, you should have a report with updates and some additional information for you. As we indicated in the pre-meeting, we're very proud of our engineering team. We've received certification allowing us to execute federal highway projects. And I want to again thank Ms. Cooler and Mr. Panther and Ms. Brooks for their efforts that will allow us to work state and federal governments on various transportation projects. Also got some information on free mental health first aid training to be held August 6th. And the Savannah Sports Council announces that Savannah will be hosting the 2025 National Junior Olympic Track and Field Championships, and I think they'll be here a lot, Savannah State. Got some information there for you, notifying you that we'll have our annual Employee Appreciation Fair, and that'll be at In Market Arena on July 22nd from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. And from the Health Department, we have a Super Community Baby Shower, and that'll be held on Saturday, July 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And those are my updates, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. The, there's nothing else for the agenda. Can I get a motion for?
Motion to, to executive session for appointments.
For appointments, correct.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, do we get, it is moved and second that we go to close out for executive session and we will, at this point, and we'll meet back in the executive room. We do need a vote for that. Okay.